It is thirty, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you everybody for coming. First item on our agenda this evening is review and approval of the meeting. We've got a minute from the power meeting to give it. If anybody has any thoughts, corrections, or additions, if you'd be kind enough to provide those to Linda, otherwise I will look for a motion please.
Look to approve as written.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Took care of the minutes. Items number three and four have been struck in from the agenda this evening, correct?
Yes.
That moves us down to item number five, public hearing, general development plan for Blaine's fourteen.
Okay, I'll start by sharing a few of engineer comments, as well as staff review comments. I found it interesting tonight that we had two proposals for development that would have called on the planning commission to rely on the comprehensive plan specifically respect to roads and parkways. It was adopted in May of two thousand and eighteen through much disserment with the planning commission and a lot of the community members, but overall it was adopted and comprehensive plans are the overall foundation for the decisions that you make. It's the go-to document along with being the reference document. State law provides that comprehensive plans are used to, or implemented, excuse me, through the zoning and land use ordinance as well as through coordinated public improvements. And that's what we have tonight were the two, but particularly the Blaine's fourteen, which will be addressing. So we need to continue to use the comprehensive plan as the reference and guidance in some of our decision-making. Now, if any of, the planning commission needs another copy, I see some here tonight already. We're always happy to give another document set, as well as to any of our developers. But I specifically included the three maps that are referenced tonight with the staff review comments that were given. So generally speaking, what does it tell us tonight? It tells us where we intended for roadways and trails to be, and we're looking at that. In addition, though, because it's a coordinated effort in looking at our roads and trail systems, keep in mind that we will call upon other developers and landowners to follow the same comprehensive plan because for the parcels or the development area that we're looking at tonight, there are units north of this area, as well as south and to the east that will be called upon to follow the same requirements of the comprehensive plan. So generally speaking, I've included the three plans that refer to where those are. And it's fairly straightforward and simple as what those are, so I don't think we need to spend time with that. We also have the general ideas from the staff, but both of the ideas are from our engineer, and most of them are straightforward, we don't need to go over that. However, I will touch on a few of them, and they're primarily on the first and second pages of the engineer letters with respect to the cost for the construction of the parkway and the cost for the construction of any trails, and the proposal that may be determined and included in the development agreement. I have no doubt that that can be figured out and determined. The developers certainly to benefit from the construction of those things, especially as the plan continues and the connectivity throughout the city is provided through the guidelines with the comprehensive plan. I also had checked with the zoning consultant, Lauren Chamberlain with Hifin Kegler. She also confer, or concurs with the proposal by the engineer, as well as staff, to designate the portions north and south of the creek as an outlot to the city, eliminating any outlots that would have been drawn to the middle of the creek. We know from our October meeting that we had a large development where we ran into that situation, and there were issues that arose. And this suggestion would certainly take care of those issues, as well as moving us forward to the greenways that the city wants to start implementing in the trail systems and the parkway systems. But I want to let you know that they concurred about that. They also suggested that we make sure we note that those outlots be left in a natural state, so that we have that documented before we have any issues with nuisance ordinances. So that was one recommendation, and I think that's it as far as the bulk of all the suggestions go. It's pretty straightforward. The engineer recommends approval, given all these suggested considerations with respect to each of them. The, oh, excuse me, Hifin Kegler also recommended that the general development plan be revised specifically to make sure the outlots are reflected as proposed.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium, provide us with your name and address if you have any comments, please.
Good evening. My name's Les Conway, and I'm with WSC Massey Engineering and Survey. The documents that were prepared and submitted for Blaine fourteen came out of my office. And what I wanted to do, and a lot of the comments under the general comments section from WHKS, I think, actually need to be addressed with regards to some changes that have actually happened. Is it, is it okay for me to have a hand up?
Sure.
Pass that one around to those folks. What I'm passing around to you is something that basically in the last few months, communities have had to deal with because of a Supreme Court ruling. And the bulk of it sits down at the bottom of page one. It's kind of the summary of it. And what we're faced with is folks, especially bigger communities, who have transportation improvement districts set up for developments around, around their cities, have been, put it in an easy for aids hog diet based on the Supreme Court ruling. And a statutory city does not have express authority under that Minnesota statute to condition approval of a subdivision application on the payment of an infrastructure charge for future road improvement projects. So to come right to the point, in the general comments, items number five, six, seven, and thirteen should not be part of the approval process for Blaine fourteen. They can't be written into the development agreement, or they shouldn't be written into the development agreement. And this is just something that came apart that didn't mean really to impact cities the way it did, but it has, and that's just the fact of the matter these days. Down the road, there's lots of talk about it, but how the state legislature will actually address this item is unknown at this point, but right now municipalities and cities are faced with this reality. So when we come to things such as the parkway, that parkway isn't actually necessary for this subdivision to develop and actually be maintained and actually function. So where we have situations where there should be infrastructure and the developer would be requested to, in lieu of money, give that to a city for future infrastructure improvements, that shouldn't be part of this agreement. So it shouldn't be part of the development process, and it shouldn't be a part of the approval process. And so I just wanted to get this one out to you. You'll obviously, city attorneys and your folks are going to have to discuss it, but right now, that's where we stand today. And so these items that are included in these recommendations need to be revised or removed from, from these opinions. So I wanted to get that one out in front of everybody, just to start with. It's just, it is an item, has to be addressed. I think the general development agreement, or the general development plan that we have here, the items that are included under the three comments, three comments under the general development plan, also address this. At the parkway, it also comes under the question of the bridge. And I guess there's been other discussions here before my time was ever here, but comments based on the bridge, the alignment of, of the road, we've provided this in a general disagreement. We don't have a problem providing right-of-way turned over to the city of Casson for that future development. But the review of where that goes is down the road, and I believe it's pretty far down the road. And so we don't really have a way to actually analyze right-of-way for the abutments or the vertical alignment. We're providing the property, that property lays on top of the land that goes there, and how you wish to move forward with that. I think that's something that would be internal and based on how your city engineer would like to move forward with it. But the bridge itself is its own discussion item, and I don't think that, I guess based on what I understand about it, I think we're looking at something that's down the road that we can't even anticipate what that may or may not be. The ambiguity or the arbit, it's arbitrary how it's laid out in the comp plan. We're providing right-of-way for it, and we don't have a problem with that. But at this point, specific design details is so far down the road that we, it's, it's not, it's not really prudent for a developer to look at that versus your own city engineer and actually start to come up with some, some concepts, some design, some basic understanding of it. And if there's a little bit more right-of-way in the short term here that you believe would be required for the abutments and how that thing would go along, certainly doable, but I believe there's two or three, two comments anyways with regards to the vertical alignment and the bridge abutment. And then there's obviously the cost of the bridge, so three items, that I also don't think should have actually been included in the approval process for this subdivision because it's outside of what is actually the, the Blaine fourteen development. I think the only other item that we wanted to look at, and I believe it was just addressed, but when we look at the waterway that is there, there's value to that property, and it's certainly a negotiating item, but there has to be something in lieu of that value that needs to be negotiated as part of the development agreement. What was requested as far as, what came back as far as the WHKS review process, I think, I think, I think the developments along here have tried every which way to try and get this right, and this one actually shows it going down to the center line of the creek. Comments by the staff indicate that you want that as an outlot. Now, on the north side of the river, there isn't anything designated in the comp plan for that trail. The trail is actually on the south side. And if you move forward on this, when the south side is developed, there certainly wouldn't be any problem with trying to figure out how that alignment fits in there and what would actually be intended. But on the north side, those items aren't there, and whether those items are maintained, those could be a, those could be a zoning question for maintaining that green space, especially in the floodway. That's actually, nothing can be built there. At least, nothing should be built there. If somebody actually does something down there, I think, I think they tried that over in the Blaine tenth, and that didn't work out too well. I think they had quite a few things down in that neck of the woods that shouldn't have been in that area. So I'm not quite sure as far as the request that those, that those items actually be part of this development agreement and part of the approval process, is a negotiation, but there is value associated with that, and in value in turn needs to be returned back to the developer. Having said that, I think most of the other things inside of the recommendations are labels and omissions and some, some clarification items that were requested that are, that are all certainly doable. We do agree that it should be approved, and that we can certainly make the changes for this, but I don't believe that the updated GDP would actually show that as an outlot without a negotiation for what that value would be. And if you have any questions for me, I think I've gone through most of it. Most of the other things are pretty straightforward that can be worked through WHKS and figured out. Hydrants and easements and those types of things are all pretty straightforward and can get worked through, but I did want to bring those couple items to your attention for approval of this matter. And I think that's all I had for this evening. I'm open for questions if anybody has any.
How much does the developer look on for?
Well, I don't know that we've seen anything like for park, parkland dedication, that would obviously be something that would be in trade.
Offset that.
Offset those. And obviously, some of the other items that come up in the fees, I think, and I'm not sure exactly where the venue should be, but we're very interested to transfer the right-of-way for that parkway, but we'd also like to see some movement on this stormwater issue. We're going to redesign and reconstruct that pond to handle everything coming out of the eleventh and the twelfth and part of the tenth that runs through there right now, and now we're going to carry everything in the fourteenth. And that was a comment in here, and we have no problem doing that, but that basically means that there's twenty years of development that should basically be handled in that stormwater pond after we're done with the new design and it's approved. And so some of those types of stormwater charges, those were the things that we would really like to see, just basically to offset costs.
For those Blaine's developments, those that you were referring to, the eleventh and the?
That is correct. Yep, that is correct. Going back as far as two thousand and three.
So that pond that you're referring to is what's shown here on the drawing on the south side of the?
Yes, yep, and we already did some of the preliminary work on it, and there's plenty of room to get a big enough pond with outlet and discharge and rate control into the creek. And that's why that big triangle is actually shown there, because we're going to enlarge it up to the northwest and put a little depth in it for rate control. And it certainly seems that it's doable to handle all of the water that's coming through that thirty-six inch pipe, plus add it in what we're going to do.
I'll ask just one question. Okay. Depending on what planning commission decides, an additional recommendation is for the north side of the creek, all those individual lots to be combined into one outlot in terms of the developer? Is that a consideration?
From the end of the lot down to the creek?
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
We discussed it with the owner, and I think that's what they tried to do back over south of the tenth with, you guys will have to help me with the name here, Maustad? Who actually bought all those outlets?
Mr. Casel.
Casel, that was, that was the name, that was the name. And that was a situation where they tried to do it there, and then all of a sudden, people started just taking advantage of it, and now all of a sudden, the liability was back onto the outlot. And so consequently here, we want to get rid of that liability and just go to the creek bed. However, having said that, as I indicated before, nothing should be done in that floodway, and I don't think we're objectionable to doing something with that floodway and turning it into an outlot for that green space along there. But, yeah, we, I don't, the owner, the owner had a heck of a time, or the developer had a heck of a time with that, with that other area where people just started thinking that was their backyard going all the way down there.
Is that a consideration of ownership and what the responsibilities were, and it might be easier for?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
If it had one instead of piecemeal, but that is just a situation.
I see, I see what you're saying. Consideration.
If I'm reading this correctly, Nancy, based on the lines, it looks like the northern line of what we're suggesting is outlots is on the northern side of that utility easement, right?
Yeah.
Correct. I believe in the WHKS comments, they wanted that easement shown, and then from that easement down, and then all the way back across on the south side. But I think right now, I think they, I think we took off, I think they brought in too many parts of this. Everything south of that creek should actually be part of that next development down there because there are comp plan considerations with regards to the trail on that south side, as well as, there were even a couple of comments here that, about making provisions for a water line to loop through the south side, which I believe we've already done. There's a, there's a double easement along the old twelfth, which is lot nine, shown on the plat, and then the new lot one that's on the south side there, where the, where the new development would start. There was already ten feet of utility or utility easement on that lot nine, and we'd add another ten. So you could certainly get a water line there, and then I think the other water line would actually be whenever the road, the roadway gets, the parkway gets extended, because there'll have to be a sewer line there to come across anyways, and that'll all be part of that bridge, insulated pipe and utilities, and get brought across that bridge and tied back into that main trunk line. There's nothing really from the west that allows us connectivity of the utilities from where we are.
Do you have any idea what the distance is from the front lot to that utility easement?
Yeah, it was about a hundred and fifty, something like that, which was kind of common, and I think that's the way, whenever I looked back at the nineteen eighty plans that, that put in that sewer line, that was going to be their best guess. That it was going to be somewhere in a hundred and fifty, which is a common lot, but a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty is actually where I think that, that kind of falls. Gets a little narrower to the east because that pipe actually takes a jog up to the north. So do I sit down now and then you do your internal discussion? Is that what we do now?
Any other questions? Please go for a question. Have any comments you would like to make, sir? If that's the case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Is this relevant to our pursuits here?
I, I was trying to look at it quickly, but it was a fifteen-page document, but I, and furthermore, I don't want to jeopardize it to make sure that it's still, not factually distinguishable or other issues.
This appears to be related to a subdivision of what started off as seventy-seven acres of woodlands or land, I guess I shouldn't say even that. Not necessarily a general development.
It, it, some of what I read, it also appears to perhaps apply charges for roads, future roads outside of the actual subdivision. So it, this very, it could be factually distinguishable from our case, but without actually reading the whole thing, I would be reluctant to give you a, this is my written legal opinion about it.
I've got, if you don't mind, I've got three reservations about all of this so far right now, based on what was presented so far. As one, our attorney hasn't had an opportunity to review this, to provide any guidance. Two, we're still waiting on a floodplain report from the county regarding this potential green space. And three, we've got a potential policy at the encouragement of our planning consultant, that we put a policy together regarding these green space outlots, and those three things are all pending. And so I'm hesitant about moving forward with any of this, and based on those three criteria, I would recommend that we at least table this until we can address particularly the questionable legal opinion, and then bring it back and review it once we get that back.
I agree.
Can we table? Just clarification on the sixty-day rule.
Is it for a subdivision application?
The review is for a general development plan and a preliminary plat.
And the sixty-day rule would apply to the preliminary plat at least.
Now, at face value, I'm, I'm okay with the alignment of the streets and the way they've got lots plotted out, but there's other mitigating circumstances that I'm uncomfortable with.
This application was signed after Bigelow's. Bigelow's sixty days would have been up the day before the January planning commission meeting, which is why he extended his. But this one is dated after that one, so we would actually be able to hit the January planning commission meeting within the sixty days, because this was dated eleven eighteen.
Will that give you time to review that?
Absolutely.
Will we hear anything from our review people?
We may review that.
On the floodplain?
On the floodplain. I'm not sure that'll be determined by then. I, and that hits mostly the suggestive greenway, so I'm not sure. I mean, I could certainly try and get an update from Brandon, but, and then as far as the other green space outlot kind of policies, we'd have to look at them to maybe expedite some of that, but I was going to give an update on that after. And again, it's a timing issue. But I, you know, but that one too, though, I can probably make something work with that, but the other issues are maybe more critical.
Just with regard to the fifty-day issue, if necessary, the city can grant an extension of that and additional sixty days, if necessary.
Forgive my memory, do you need a motion to table?
I, yeah, we should.
I don't think so.
If there's no more discussion, I will, motion that we table this until at least the next meeting.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, with all that said, is there any value in having the public hearing on the preliminary plat?
Do you want to?
I think you should.
Have another hearing?
Yes.
Or over the hearing in that table?
Because then you don't have to republish.
Yes.
For all those additional views.
Do you have any comments before we open up the public hearing, Nancy?
What type of?
Do you have any comments you want to share before we open?
The same as I already shared.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I will go ahead and open the public hearing for the preliminary plat. Have any comments you would like to share.
By the way, are we talking about January thirteenth?
Yeah.
Good comments, by the way, and I agree that that, that should be actually looked into. And for the preliminary plat, all of the items that were noted in the review, omissions or to show and label easements are all certainly doable, certainly for clarity and, and purpose of it. But I would come and make one comment on the review of the floodplain. And so when we, we prepared a, an exhibit, and, I don't know, it's a little harder to read whenever you're looking at it in the documents themselves. But with regards to FEMA and looking at those, if you look at the labels on the houses, let me just see one thing. All right, so what would end up coming out in the grading plan and some of the other documents is, is that we would actually look at the, the grading plan would actually show structures on all of those lots. And so we added some of those because we actually had to do that early on in the process. But the lower floor plans for all of the houses that would be built on the south side of Third Street would all be five to six of Third Street would all be five to six feet above the ring castings that currently are in the sanitary trunk line, which in itself is two to three feet above the existing floodplain cross-sections that were sho- that are shown in the existing firms. So even if there is more information coming back out with regards to FEMA and a redesignation of the firms, does everyone know what the firm is? Just so we're all talking that that's actually the map that comes out from FEMA that has the AE zones and everything labeled on it that they actually use for, for floodplain and insurance and all of those types of things. So we're pretty comfortable, at least with regards to where the residences are and the building locations and being, I mean, I have never, I've never seen, and I know there's been some flooding issues, but I've, I would, I would be, we're, we're pretty comfortable that there isn't going to be a four or a five-foot change in those firms that would actually impact this. And we've actually looked at the pond itself to help get that out of what might be an existing flood condition, because otherwise you lose the integrity of the, of the storage pond that we actually want. So you want to actually raise that one up, and so we're pretty comfortable with those items, and I know they made that comment in the general comments, and everybody knows that it's coming out, and it impacts more the river and the waterway that's there. It would actually be more of an impact to, for instance, the bridge design, or anything downstream, or any type of grading that, you know, somebody may ever want to do in that waterway, but we're pretty comfortable with, with, with those particular items. So I figured I'd just get that one in there. From the preliminary plat point of view, the comments, and then showing all of those easements and stuff, I believe is a pretty straightforward process. Not really anything with regards to the engineering comments, but those are certainly, certainly doable as well. But we have no problem with making the additions as shown on, in the WHKS comments for the preliminary plat.
So off, you, I just got a quick question.
Yep.
So when you were talking about the floor level of those houses, is three feet above the casting of the main line sewer?
Yeah, they're actually more like five and six feet above it, so.
Okay. I know that the two floods that we had this spring, the castings were under the water.
Yep, and, and we've heard that before, and now there's, you know, from that casting at 12, let's just say the casting's at 1220, the floors are at 1225 or 1226.
So there's a whole another five or six feet to get up there. And then whatever that setback is, and we even talked about it, that even if the firm,
you know, and it, it can take a long time for, for those things to be, actually be adopted, because it is a serious issue when it comes to people's property, and you want to start changing things like that, it gets pretty serious. But we were even talking about it, that we would provide all of the homeowners, someone buys a lot, builds a home there, that there is a FEMA document where you actually go in and you certify what those elevations are, so you can actually document it, so that they can use it, so they don't actually get, you know, kind of side-swiped by insurance companies coming back and telling them that, you know, now you got to do this. And it's a pretty straightforward documentation, we do it all the time, for showing that areas are out of floodplains, and we don't have a problem doing that for those people.
Just a side note, have you ever, talking with Blaine, ever talked about making sure that all these homes along that area have an anti-back flow valve in the sewers?
Um, I don't know that the discussion has come up, and I, I heard, I actually, when we were talking about this sewer connection going into that main trunk line, I believe that he had made a comment like that to me, but I don't know that, I, I don't know that, you know, I mean, it's six, $700 valve, and I don't see why that shouldn't actually, and that's something that.
I think it would be a plus selling the houses, me, myself.
Yep.
I mean, I've installed the things myself.
And if Charlie, if, if, if your maintenance department, if Charlie just wanted to actually say that, that's one of his comments, I don't, there is no issue with it. I mean, it's a common, it's a common.
Go at it.
Yeah, well, it's a common, it's a, it's a common, it's a common thing.
Insurance policy. Right.
Yeah.
Cheap one at that. Yes, definitely.
No? Absolutely agreed, yeah, and, you know, I, I don't, whether, whether actually, most people end up putting them in there anyways, but in light of that trunk line and some of the things that, you know, I haven't worked here that long in the community, but.
This is some of the issues we've had along that creek.
Yep.
I just think it would be a plus.
Yeah.
Great plus.
Agreed. I, I don't see any issue with that.
Thank you.
Actually, not in Cassin? No. I will assume there are no more comments, and go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you.
If I may comment?
Please.
It does appear that this decision is, is more of a transportation improvement fund, where they're asking the subdivider or the person plating the property to pay cash in to finance predetermined road improvement projects outside the area to be developed. So I, I take this to be more along the lines of a transportation improvement district, but I, I disagree that this precludes the city from requiring payment or requiring at least contribution for this parkway.
Do we have any more comments that we would like to make on the plat?
I would suggest that we table this also until the GDP has been hammered out.
May I take that as a motion, please?
I will move that we table this till the January 13th meeting.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Have a second, yeah.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Make a table this as well. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anything else we need to discuss this evening?
I, if I could, I'd just like to give you an update on progress of what you've been checking and a code update. It's been a couple of months since they've had input from some staff, and she's now sent a redline copy back to staff and our city engineer and our city attorney for our review, and the intention is for us to go through some of that, refine some of those sections before it coming back to you, ideally January, maybe February. However, what I wanted to say though is if any of you would like those sections that she has sent us, and she's going to send us a few more next week and the week after that, if you want to start reviewing them now, you're more than happy to, but we just want to make sure that it is, her words, refined a little more before it comes to you, because you will still see redline copies. But if there are some issues we need to tweak or hammer out before then, you know, if you entrust the staff and attorney and engineer to do that first, we'll do that, but if any of you want it, we'd be happy to send those on to all of you as well.
Any takers, Sean?
I'd like to seal them.
Okay, I'll forward them to you. You bet. We received two sets so far. You as well?
Send them to me, too.
I'll just send them to all of you. Them or not.
Yeah, send them to town, too.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Sean.
Thanks, Mike. Yes, we will. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Is there anything else anyone would like to discuss this evening? It kind of, I'm enjoying the meeting. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.